Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the December 2nd, 2015 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. And I will, we, before we start the, the meeting, I will share with you that we need to amend the agenda, and we are going to add item 1A, and that's the election of a secretary, before we start. So, as we begin, would you join us with a moment of silence, please? Thank you. And now, I suspect, we should go ahead and adopt the amended agenda.
Madam Chairman, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We need nominations.
Madam Chair, I nominate Chris Tierney for Secretary.
Second.
Any other nominations?
They'll be closed.
Second.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Okay. We do have a set of minutes from November the 4th.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption of the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Let's see, for meetings and committee reports, I think, a Transportation Committee. Ms. Rhodes?
Yes, ma'am. We met on November 23rd. We have a new member to the committee. That's our new supervisor, Mr. Dunn. We had three items on the agenda. First was the capital improvement program, review of what we've had in the past. Don't foresee any changes. That'd be coming back before, so I believe again in December for final approval. The long-range plan update, there was discussion about the complete streets, whether to go with that, or form something that's, I guess, more Freddie County-based, and we're going to look at doing that to change, or making a change to the comprehensive plan on our update. And then the final thing was an update on Route 37 and Exit 313 from VDOT. The preliminary engineering around Winchester for the eastern bypass is done, and they're going in-depth on 81 over to 522 South right now, working on those plans. Then Exit 313, there was a discussion of the bridge. There's still ongoing studies about how to replace that and improve that intersection.
Which, I do believe, that's the only committee report that we have. And so, I see that our representative from the city is with us, and Dr. Feo, if you'd like to share with us what you've all been doing.
There's been no action since, since your last meeting. Our regular meeting is December 15th. We will have a second public, public hearing on the rezoning of 110 parcels along Billwood Avenue to affect the Carter enhancement district. That's basically the extent of my report.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Mr. Hess from the Board of Supervisors.
Yes. Madam Chairman, the Board did not meet on the 25th due to the Thanksgiving holiday, so there has been no Board of Supervisors meeting since the last Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much. This is the time on our agenda that we open it up for citizen comments, and that would be regarding anything that is not on the agenda. Anything at all? All right, we'll close the citizen comment portion. We do have three public hearings, and the first is rezoning 11-15 of Freedom Manor, submitted by Panoni Associates, to rezone 13.8596 acres from the RA Rural Areas District to the RP Residential Performance District, and 33689 acres from the RP Residential Performance to the Residential Performance with proffers. The properties are located east and adjacent to Paper Mill Road, Route 644, approximately 2,300 feet northwest of the existing signalized intersection of Front Royal Pike, Route 522, and Paper Mill Road, Route 644, in the Shawnee Magisterial District. They are identified by property identification numbers 64-A23, 64-A20, and 64-A19.
Madam Chair, I'll have to recuse on this application.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. The Freedom Manor rezoning application, as you stated, seeks to rezone a little over 33 acres from the RP District, and a little over 13 acres from the RA District, all to the RP District with proffers. I would note that of the 33 acres of existing RP-zoned acreage, 26 acres of that was previously rezoned in 2005, under the same name of Freedom Manor. This is the location map for the property. All three parcels are outlined in black. They are all located in this area here. We have Route 522 in this area, and Paper Mill that runs along the frontage of the site. The application seeks to revise the proffers for the previously rezoned 26-acre tract, which is 64A23, as well as include the additional acreage from the two other pieces. Parcel 64A19 has historical RP zoning, and parcel 20 is currently split-zoned, historical RP and RA. This development would allow the construction of up to 300 residential dwelling units. Phase 1 would be 100 single-family detached units, and Phase 2 is 200 either townhouse or multifamily units. Now, this is the generalized development plan that is included with the application. It shows the site access, which is the roundabout on Paper Mill, the internal road network that would eventually connect into the Madison Village to the north, which is here. And I would note, this project has no connection into the Westwood subdivision. Back with the previous rezoning in 2005, 2006, there was a restricted deed covenant entered into, with the owner and the county, so there will be no connection into their road network. As I said, initial access to the site is via a roundabout intersection with Paper Mill Road. Future additional access through interparcial connections will be provided to the north at the Madison Village Development, and that will be installed with the 150th building permit. The development also includes a 10-foot pedestrian trail along Paper Mill Road, a trail along the inner, the internal public road, as shown on the GDP, and there's also a trail along the boundary with the Shenandoah Memorial Park. Now, with the rezoning, they, the applicant has proffered a monetary contribution to offset the impacts on the county from the residential development. I would note the attached multifamily and townhouse units, that amount is consistent with the model. However, I would note that the single-family detached unit does have a reduced proffer payment, and that is due to the existing 6.8 acres of existing RP land. They have also proffered to allow the use of transferred development rights, TDRs, to pay for monetary contributions for any of the 300 dwelling units. So with that, the Freedom Manor zoning application is generally consistent with the future land use designations in the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. So, following the public hearing, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Commission to forward to the Board. I would be glad to answer any questions, and Mr. Patrick Sowers is here with Panoni Associates. Thank you.
Questions of Mrs. Perkins? Any? Thank you. Mr. Sowers?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of Planning Commission. Patrick Sowers with Panoni Associates here on behalf of the application. I won't cover the location. Ms. Perkins covered that perfectly well. We do have, as staff pointed out, basically, three components to the project, and that's starting on the south side, approximately 26 acres that were originally zoned in 2005 for, I believe, 70 residential units. Just north of that, there's approximately seven acres of existing, historically-zoned RP. And then north of that is about approximately 13 and 1/2 acres of existing RA zoning. That 13 and 1/2 acres of RA is comp plan for high-density residential, 12 to 16 units per acre. So we have proffered out single-family units as potential use in that area to ensure a higher yield, to be consistent with the comp plan. The remaining acreage to the south would be limited to single-family detached uses, and that would also be consistent with the adjoining properties. Here, you can see, as Ms. Perkins pointed out, Westwood Drive, there is an existing restrictive covenant that would preclude access from Freedom Manor to Westwood Drive, so that is not proposed as part of this application. The entrance to the project is proposing, as you can see on the generalized development plan, an offset roundabout, and the reason for that is to accommodate left-turn movements coming southbound on Paper Mill Road. When we were processing the traffic impact analysis, when you look at the 2020 Phase 1 build-out, or the 2026 full build-out of the project, enough background growth happens that there's enough through volumes on Paper Mill Road that it warrants a left turn on southbound Paper Mill Road into the project. Currently, there's only 40 to 45 feet of right-of-way for Paper Mill Road. That's not enough right-of-way to build a left-turn lane and still have your through lanes as well to accommodate the transitions. The solution here, we approached the adjoining property about acquiring additional right-of-way. They did respectfully decline. So the alternative was to construct a, an offset roundabout, and here you can see how that would function with three legs coming into the project. We did a revised roundabout justification study, submitted that to VDOT, did receive their approval on that study. So what we're proposing to ensure safe access is, before any building permits are issued for the property, this would have to be installed, which ensures that southbound left turn is With that, I think it's a pretty straightforward application. Again, approximately seven acres, about 20% of the site is already existing zoned RP. That's why we've set up our proffers to recognize that about 20% of that project is already zoned for RP for single-family uses. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions of Mr. Sowers? Yes, Mr. Thomas?
Would have any access to Westwood Drive from the project?
No, sir. The, the existing restrictive covenant would not allow that, so that is, and that is separate. That, that runs with the title of the land, so that's something that's existing, precludes access, so we're not proposing it.
Okay.
Anyone? Yes, yes, Mr. Rhodes?
Well, Mr. Sowers, back in 2005, when this was originally done, there was a connection out to 522.
Yes, sir.
I guess, why was that eliminated this time around?
There was an option, at that time, there was an option agreement to acquire right-of-way to, there's, you can see two properties adjoining between 522 and the subject property. The southernmost, there was an option to acquire right-of-way, to have an access point through. That option expired. So when we were looking at access, one, we looked at it from, let's have access from Paper Mill Road, but also from an access management standpoint, in dealing with VDOT, it'd be preferred not to have another access point on 522, since it's designated as an arterial roadway.
Okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Thomas?
So, there's only going to be one way in and out, essentially?
There will be, initially, there will be the access from Paper Mill Road. We have proffered, and here you can see the actual road network with the roundabouts that are being designed for and installed with Madison Village. All that will connect, this north-south connector road, it's not a comp plan roadway, but it will do a great job of kind of funneling traffic within this area of the site, but ultimately, you'll have access through Madison Village, at Paper Mill Road, and we are proffering an additional interparcial connector to the western property boundary.
I know it's not on your property, but where would Warrior Drive go if it comes up?
Warrior Drive is further to the west before it comes up to meet with the adjoining properties.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak regarding this rezoning? Anyone?
Yes, can you just?
Would you come forward, please, sir? And if you'd give us your name?
Okay, my name is Tom Bradylove, and I have property beside of this that they're rezoning. And one of my questions is going to be the, the traffic. Paper Mill Road is a very busy road, and I'm not so sure that with this additional traffic that they're adding, that the road is adequate, because it backs up from the traffic, like, not quite back to where they're putting their stuff in, but a good ways, up past Paul Holdeman's driveway at times, if anybody's familiar with that. Another question I have is, what are they going to do with the runoff? The, the natural drain is down across Paul Holdeman's farm, Evendale. What are they going to do to retain that? Because there's going to be thousands of gallons of water going down through his field for erosion. My neighbors have that under contract to farm it, and they have a problem crossing the sweat spot anyway. Now it's going to be much magnified because of all the asphalt and shingles and whatnot. So I think that needs to be addressed. And what do we do up Paper Mill Road for water and sewer? Now, I know it's not their problem, but it is a problem. There's people on Paper Mill Road that have outhouses, and that's including Cowdwell Lane, and there's lots of drain fields that people don't have access to. They have pump, pump and haul. You're familiar with that. So I think that needs to be addressed with this building stuff going in. These people are going to pay a higher tax base because of all this improvement, but they're getting none of the benefits. That's about it. I think that sums up what I wanted to-
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming.
... consideration. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on this rezoning? Yes, if you'll come forward and give us your name and Magisterial District, please.
Carol Manuel, I'm on Westwood Drive.
Okay.
And I thank you for addressing that, that extension. Really appreciate it. The one thing, he, gentleman before me addressed it a little bit, is the drainage and the runoff. I'm a little concerned about that also. I'm, I'm fairly certain that everyone on Westwood Drive has sump pumps that, for their basement, that handle the spring water and, and rains and all of that, and they all handle it very well at the present time, but there is, like the gentleman had said, there are a lot of wet areas, and I would, I would be very concerned with all the houses that are going in there, and what they're going to do as far as the drainage goes, and to deal with all the, the water that's presently there, and then what's going to happen when they start asphalting. And then also, when I saw this, the road and the way it's going, going through there, it's, it's, it is, well, it connects the other subdivision, but it looks like when you have all those houses in both those subdivisions and all of those units, it's going to be a lot of traffic just on that one internal road with no, from what I can see, with no access to 522 other than through the Madison Village. Is that, am I seeing that correctly?
Yes, you're correct.
Those are, those are the two concerns that I would have.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak with us this evening? Yes, come on up and give us your name, please.
Barbara Midkiff, Shawnee District. What access, last time we went through this, the people that were going to build behind Westwood Drive, they were not going to put any berm, any wall, anything between their land and the access road behind Westwood Drive for the utilities? Do they plan anything better than that, or how far back are they coming from the utility road?
Thank you. We'll ask Mr. Sowers that question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Brenda Dodd, and I am with the Shawnee District also, and like the other two people have said, traffic is a mess, and that with Paper Mill Road already being a problem. I'm thinking adding, if you're putting 100 or 300 more houses back there, it's just going to add to the confusion. Is there anything that's going to be done to Paper Mill Road to alleviate any of this traffic issue that's already there without adding to? You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we will close the public hearing section. Mr. Sowers, would you like to address some of these concerns, please?
Thank you very much. I think we'll start with, I heard drainage a couple times. I'll zoom in a little more so you can see the contours on here. These are five-foot topographic contours, and you'll see a, a circle there on the, that's 745 and 740, so that's a high point there. And then the, I'm not real good with this thing yet, drawing the little lines on it yet, like staff can do, but there's an existing pond along the frontage. That's only receiving just this small front area, since you can actually see a, a change in color between where they, they mowed and cut hay. And that's roughly where the line, the divide is from what drains to that existing farm pond, and then what drains towards 522. On the, the northern portion of the property, again, there's a, there's a high point of about 745 there, and then it drains back towards this existing pond, before then draining towards the north. Now, you know, the benefit of having even higher, more stringent stormwater management regs currently, we can't increase post-development flows from what pre-development flows are. In addition to that, we're going to have to take care of stormwater quality now, which is part of that July 2014 addition to the stormwater management regs. So as far as increased runoff, we're not going to be generating an increase to damage properties downstream with the project. Traffic-wise, we looked at, so long-term, the goal is, we, we know we're going to have long-term Warrior Drive to the west. Paper Mill Road is, is on the comp plan as a, as a major collector, planned long-term major collector. We've got the Madison Village road network that's been approved. That project's under construction currently, so this project can essentially, instead of having Paper Mill and 522 as your only means of access, can funnel traffic within those two roadways, to take traffic up through Madison Village, bring it down if it needs to. Essentially, it's creating kind of a, not really a grid, but something, more connections, more nodes, more connections, and that's going to distribute traffic better. The existing signal at Paper Mill and 522, if you look at our proposed traffic, there's, in the PM peak hour, there is a level service E at that intersection. We're approximately 4.7% of those trips. It actually doesn't decrease in level of service from the project itself. And recognizing the benefit as far as a traffic calming device, which roundabouts function as, it will slow down traffic before it gets to that. But as far as a level of service, the roadway network that's proposed per the traffic study and per VDOT's comments, functions adequately all the way through 2026, which is the full build-out for the project. Questions concerning, I believe the question is on, on buffering between the existing lots and proposed lots. I think, I think that's what the question was, and if I didn't get that right, I'll, I can clarify that more later. And that is, with single-family detached uses adjacent to single-family detached uses, the zoning ordinance doesn't require a buffer because those are like uses. Anything that's, an apartment dwelling requires a level service, or a category C buffer between the single-family detached existing proposed apartments. If it's a townhome, it requires at least a category B buffer. So there's ordinance requirements to provide buffers between uses that aren't like uses. But if it's a single-family detached to detached, there would be no buffer for that. If there's any additional questions while I'm here, I'm, I'm happy to answer them.
We miss any? Sir, no, excuse me, excuse me, ma'am. If you'd come up to the mic, please?
How close is that property going to be to Westwood, the back of the houses on Westwood Drive? That's where I live. And it's right outside, at my backyard.
Sure.
You have a passageway here for the utility, right? Right there, and then the houses are there. How far away are they going to be from my backyard?
Sorry, and it was a little atypical to look at things. Are you talking, are you along this portion, ma'am?
I'm here.
Okay.
Westwood Drive, and your houses are up here, right?
Well, there's, there's going to be houses behind your house, and then there's-
Where's, where's behind my house? Right here?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I got the wrong direction, then.
Mr. Sowers, it might be good if you two could get together?
Happy to sit down with you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, um, yes. Mr. Rhodes?
Mr. Sowers, I've had a couple things. One, you said your project wouldn't generate more water. I think what you meant was, it will not release-
More water, correct. Correct.
Extra water on your site.
Yes, sir. Correct.
And then, just two comments. I think it'd be a good idea, on your internal streets, that road that we showed back in '05, to have it stubbed off towards 522, so that those two parcels ever do develop, it gives you another route to get in and out. You know, just a 50-foot right-of-way that at least gets you over there. That way, when they come in for rezoning, we can get the connection. And following up on the other discussion, you may want to consider maybe putting up a six-foot fence along the properties just to satisfy them. Just throwing it out there.
Gary, I don't know what you're talking about, to get out, if another piece gets developed, what are you talking about?
In 2005, on the master burn there, your GDP, they had a road that came across and basically lined up with Vine Lane.
Mm-hmm.
But that option went away, he said. I'm just commenting that maybe we need to, that road stubbed off to that property and just stop it, or at least provide the right-of-way.
Sure.
So in the future, they can make it out to 522, if those parcels develop.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Mr. Thomas?
I agree with Mr. Rhodes, because I've made, I've taken the wrong turn sometimes going down the south part of the county, and I've come out Paper Mill Road at 4:30 or 5 o'clock in the evening, and I've been backed up from that light about to where your property is. Add another 3,000 trips in there, and I really don't think Paper Mill Road can take the traffic. You know, maybe the counts say it should be able to, but if you sit out there in the traffic for 10 minutes to get through that light, it doesn't seem that it does. There should be another connection to 522, and, you know, Westwood Drive or coming out to Vine Lane there would be a good option. Westwood Drive's not an option, so coming out to Vine Lane would be a good option.
Okay.
Yes.
Patrick, on, yes, number five, you had option for use of the TDRs. Is that an option that's going to be pursued, you think?
It's, it's simply there just to have the option available. I think it's a good option to have, but there's no immediately, immediate plans to use it, but it's there as, just, as a just-in-case.
What would be a, an instance where that would trigger to, to be used?
If TDRs, if a property became available where the TDRs could be obtained.
Okay. So it currently doesn't have any to, okay.
Mr. Bone?
Patrick, just a, kind of a quick clarification about Paper Mill Road. The prior rezoning for Freedom Manor included a monetary contribution for future improvements. And, and looking at the current proffer, the proposed proffer package, there's no contribution toward any of the off-site or regional improvements. Can you give me some insight into why you guys are making that change?
I think, I think a lot of it was driven by the 2005 market, really, in what a, a project could absorb one, and sometimes those were made above and beyond really the impacts of the development. When we did the traffic study and proposed a roundabout alternative at the site entrance with, with VDOT, feeling comfortable that that mitigates the impacts, we didn't feel it was necessary to go above and beyond with a monetary proffer, since it's being mitigated by the built improvements. And that project only was for the 20.6 acres. It didn't provide this interconnectivity through the northern pieces. Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we've closed the public hearing, but, sir, if I could just suggest that you get with Mr. Sowers afterwards? That's great. Thank you. Time for any conversation, discussion, comments?
Madam Chair, I'm concerned about the traffic on Paper Mill Road, and I wish the connection to 522, even if it was a ride-in, ride-out, would still be there, but I don't know what the other options are at this point.
Anyone else? Comments? Thoughts?
Just, I hear what Roger's saying, and I, I felt the same way, but with VDOT and blessing this thing, it, you know, it seemed like to me they've done their studies on it. You know, I've seen the same thing happen further south on 522, and there was big areas never developed that I didn't think would ever work, but they've really, it seemed like they worked well.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Well?
I'll just throw, I guess I'm comfortable with this. The stormwater management regulations that kicked in in 2014, I think, is going to handle the drainage. They're so stringent, odds are you're going to have less drainage or runoff coming from it because you have to detain so much. I'd be- I'd be supportive of it if we also had the recommendation that they have an internal road stubbed off to the east to eventually tie in 522.
Recommend approval of rezoning 11-15, Freedom Manor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of rezoning 11-15.
Madam Chairman?
Sir?
Mr. Ambrogi, would you like to add in a recommendation to stub the road off over to the, towards 522?
I wouldn't object to that. I'd move for approval with that amendment, with that rider with it, attached to it. We sent it to the board like that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that as well.
Mr. Sir?
Second was fine with it.
Are we, are we okay in not making another motion? Okay, that's great. Okay, well, let's, well, Mr. Moon?
Moon, yes?
Dunlap, yes.
Kenny, yes?
Bowden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Crockett, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Hungry, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on January the 13th. Kidok. Our next item is also a public hearing item, is conditional use permit 04-15 for Jerry Lee and Kyung Lee, submitted for a modification of CUP 22-04 to add a monument sign. The property is located at 549 Valley Mill Road, Route 659, and is identified by, with property identification number 55-A-56 in the Red Bud Magisterial District. Mr. Chairin?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of Planning Commission, this property is currently zoned RP. It's residential performance. As you pointed out, it's a use as an adult care facility. Surrounding properties are all zoned RP. Their uses are residential. This is, again, a request to enable construction of a monument sign on the property. If I could turn your attention to the map to your left, the property's outlined in black. As you can see, that Valley Mill Road actually splits it in half. That occurred when they did the change, the changing of Valley Mill Road when they expanded it a few years back. And of course, there's the aerial photograph. This property, just for a little background, back in 2000, or, excuse me, back in 1996, it was subject to a conditional use permit. This is for, I think Mr. Thomas probably was the only one on the planning commission at the time. This was the Rose Memorial Facility at that time. It was approved back in 1996. At that time, it was approved for a 26-bed adult care facility. They amended that conditional use permit with another one in 2000, or 2204 was the conditional use permit in 2004, and that was to add some more beds to it to make the total facility to 34 beds. However, through the conditional use process, there was no opportunity or there was no condition for a sign. As you know, our conditional use permits have a proviso in it that says any change or modifications has to come before this body, and then also the Board Supervisor for approval. So that's why the applicant is here tonight, just so we understand the conditional use permit. Nothing's going to change. There's not going to be any additions or any beds added to this facility. The conditions that apply to the previous conditional use permits will still stay in place. With that, this is going to show you where, if you can make out where the sign is going to be located, so you have an idea where it is. The sign will be located right here. This is a, a part of the site plan that came back in 2007. It was approved for the addition, as you can see in the lower corner of this, of this facility. And again, there was never a provision for a sign, so the applicant would like to have a sign, monument-type sign. With that, should the planning commission feel this use to be appropriate, staff will recommend these two conditions to be assigned to this conditional use permit. Number one, all review agency and comments and requirements shall be complied with at all times to include the approved conditions of conditional use permit 0296 and conditional use permit 2204 for this adult care facility. Condition number two, only one monument sign, 44 square feet in size and 5 feet in height, will be allowed on the property. With that, Madam Chair, happy to answer any questions that you or any of the planning commissioners may have on this conditional, amendment of this conditional use permit. The applicant is also here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a question? Yes, Mr. Dunlap.
Mark, do you know if the sign will be internally lit or will it be uplighted or lighted at all?
Uplighted. That's what I thought. It'll be uplighted.
Anyone else? Else? All righty. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak regarding, speak to us regarding this conditional use permit 04-15? Then we will close the public hearing. And so, we have a location of the sign, and that's, that's good. This is in the Red Bud District, and-
Madam Chair, I would move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of CUP 04-15, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report.
Any other comments to be made? Then we'll vote.
Hungry, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Crockett, yes.
Oats, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Bowden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Moon, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This also will go to the Board of Supervisors on the 13th of January. Okay, our next item, also a public hearing item, is an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, zoning, Article 2, supplementary use regulations, parking buffers and regulations for specific uses. This is Part 201 in the supplementary use regulation 165-201.02 setback requirements. This is a revision to the county ordinance to remove the R5 residential recreational community district supplementary use regulations for setback extensions. Thank you, Mrs. Perkins.
Again, thank you. Back in 2011, the RP, which is the residential performance district setbacks and dimensional requirements, were revised to introduce setbacks for unroofed decks and structures. Now, with that addition, the allowance for extensions into the setback with, within the supplementary use regulations portion of the ordinance was changed to eliminate the RP in R4 districts. Since the RP dimensional requirements also apply to the R5, during the 2011 revisions, the R5 should have been removed from that section. So this is a minor revision to remove the R5 from the supplementary use regulations to ensure that those developments zoned R5 all utilize the RP district dimensional standards as intended. So kind of the timeline from where this ordinance has been, the DRC discussed this back at their August meeting. It came before you as a discussion at your September meeting, and the board held a discussion at their October meeting, and they did send it forward to public hearing. So tonight, following the public hearing, staff is seeking a recommendation from the commission to forward to the board. I would gladly answer any questions.
Questions of Mrs. Perkins? Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment on this ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, recommend approval of the ordinance.
Second.
Dear, it's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of this ordinance change. Mr. Moon?
Moon, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Bowden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Crockett, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Hungry, yes.
Kidok. Thank you. And the chair votes yes. This, too, will go to the board on January the 13th. Our final item is a discussion item, and that's the annual review of the Planning Commission bylaws and roles and responsibilities. And Mrs. Perkins is going to help us with that.
Again, thank you. Every fall, the guiding documents for the planning commission are reviewed, revised as appropriate, and then adopted during the planning commission's first meeting of the calendar year. Back in November, staff solicited comments on suggested revisions. We did refuse, receive a few minor revisions for the bylaws. However, no changes were suggested for the roles and responsibilities document. In your agenda, the few minor changes were highlighted in red. I would be happy to go over any of those if you have any questions. If you have any additional recommendations for changes tonight, we would incorporate those into the final document, and they would be presented for adoption at your January meeting. I'd gladly answer any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Perkins? Even more important are the changes that you think should be made. Any other changes? All righty, I think we're done. And this is not going anywhere except to us on the first day in Jan, first meeting in January. Okay, let's see, what other news do I have? It is that we will not have the second meeting for this month, and that would be the 16th. And so we will need to cancel that.
Madam Chairman, will we cancel the second meeting of the month for December 16th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And it, it's obvious that we'll see each other next year, and for the life of me, I can't think of, what is the date of our first meeting in January? Let's not worry about it. We'll find out later.
I'm sure that helps.
Absolutely.
No. Six is the first.
January 6th. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Rod. Okay, I think that does it for us, and I hope you all have glorious and memorable Christmases and all the celebrations that are in front of us, and that everybody stays healthy. How about that?
Chairman, move for German.
Do we have an update on Charlie Trippet?
No, as I mentioned, we've spoken about that. I do know that he is out of intensive care.
Okay.
That happened last week.
Hard to sign to him.
But, you know, obviously, he's not home by himself, so. Mr. Hess, do you have any?
Yeah, I'm talking about Mr. Trippet. I'm sorry, I wouldn't pay attention. Yeah, I visited him in the hospital a week ago today.
Yes.
And, I mean, all things considered, he had five bypasses. He was, seemed to be doing pretty well in that his spirits were good, and he was due to go home Friday. I have not talked to his daughter since then, so, but I assume he went home Friday.
That's great. Thank you. I'm so glad you had that information for us, because we all sort of hit a blind spot in the road there for a while. So we're all done, I think.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been done a couple times.